Talk about using the MPD process to allow for those deviations and changes.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that. I think, again, this will... When we're looking at deviating from our standards, from whether that means density or architectural, whatever it may be, I think we really need to be mindful of the LDC and maintaining the integrity of what Palm Coast is because we want to make sure that, yes, okay, we're going to deviate, but it has limitations. It's for a specific purpose, and now all of a sudden, our deviations become the standard. With regards to the goal right before that, or I guess the overall goal for this, the master plan mixed use, what is it... Why did we create this in addition to the mixed use generally? What's the difference here?
I'm gonna cover that later on. We have site-specific policies that I'll detail.
Okay, okay, got it. And then I just have one more question, sorry. When we say supportive commercial in Goal 1.1, does that include multifamily housing or is that separate? Because I know some people define commercial or multifamily as commercial and some things don't.
A number of units is usually tied to that, so...
Yeah, I just want to...
I'm trying to... In which... Under which plan?
No, it says under industrial. So, Goal 1.1, it's on page 97 of the packet. It says, "Industrial, no density restriction, includes a supportive commercial and institutional uses." Are we... Is that... Does that include multifamily residential in that commercial definition or no?
Of more than four units. That's usually the way the legal descriptions are written.
Well, no, I know, but I'm asking underneath industrial specifically.
What policy? Industrial is just for industrial, no multifamily.
Okay, so we're not talking about in the mixed-use kind of arena of things. This is more of a straight zoning type thing. We are going to look at supportive commercial and institutional uses under industrial that's not inclusive of multifamily.
That's right.
Residential. Got it. Okay.
Yeah, multifamily is a residential use, not a commercial use.
And I'll save my question. I guess this would fall under it. When you talk about low-density residential versus just normal residential, is that going to be covered under your mixed-use plan?
No, that won't. But let me address that for you because that is a new category this year.
Yes.
And you recall that when we do comp plan amendments, there's a lot of times that we'll do a specific site policy limiting density. When we do a theoretical yield, a lot of times we'll have densities that will never reach the maximum density of that residential category. So providing this residential category is really more realistic of changing it to a low-density residential than the regular residential. It limits the number of total units for that new flume category.
So my question then is, right now for... Are we getting rid of then in this comp plan, or I guess future zonings, are we getting rid of single-family and multifamily? Is that going away?
No.
Okay, so how does this work in conjunction with SFR and MFR?
So if you had a... It doesn't. The zoning... The underlying zoning can be SFR 1, 2 through 5.
Got it. So rather than just have residential?
But it's the maximum density.
Okay, got it. So before we just had residential, now we've got low-density residential and residential.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. So then my follow-up question to that would be, because I don't remember, currently in our zoning, what are the dwelling units per acre for residential?
It is 12 units per acre.
So we're increasing it?
No.
Well, this says 15 units.
Oh, 15 for the total max for residential, yes.
Right now, it's 12.
No, 15. For future land use. We have different designations for zoning.
Right. What I'm asking, though, is currently, right now, in our current zoning, what is the max... What is our density for residential cap at?
If you're in a master plan development, you can go up to 15 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
But if you're in MFR 2 zoning, then it's 12 units per acre. But because the future land use designation of, in this case, mixed use, and I think maybe I should go back... If you're speaking specifically of the residential land use designation, that future land use designation has a maximum density cap of 12 units per acre. So even if you're a master plan development, if your land use... Future land use designation is residential, you're limited to 12. However, if you have a mixed-use future land use designation and you have the zoning of master plan development, you may have a maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre.
So then by just having this low-density residential and residential, are we allowing an increase in that cap in whatever the future comp plans or mixed-use plans or whatever it is that we're doing?
No, ma'am, we're not.
Okay.
We're not. 15 remains as the maximum density in a mixed-use designation, a mixed-use future land use designation. What we've done with this low-density residential, as Ray mentioned, is that it's really intended for when someone comes in and says, "I really just want to do a single-family residential," no more than four or five units per acre. Well, because previously, if we didn't have this low-density residential category, we had one category, residential, and that allowed for density from anywhere from .5, actually less, .5 to 12 units per acre.
Mm-hmm.
What we've done is create this other category so that when we have someone who is looking to do just a low-density, single-family, we don't... We can apply that land use designation and not necessarily have to do the footnotes on the map that, "For this area, you are limited to 300 units."
Mm-hmm.
It eliminates the need for that if we were to just have this low-density category.
You're actually lowering the density in certain areas. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last comment. Just...
You're lowering the cap on density in certain specific areas, not increasing.
So I just have a couple of quick questions with what we're doing here with zoning. Will there... Is there going to be any conflict with the zoning we have now and what we will be adopting? Are there any conflicts?
You mean change?
Well, change, which could be a conflict.
Well, could be, yeah.
I mean, you know, I mean, what happens when somebody says, "You've changed my property zoning"? What will be our reaction to that? Can they simply say, "Let's go back to the old comp plan"? So I'm just curious. Will there first be any conflicts that we're gonna have to deal with?
No, sir.
None?
No, this is an added future land use as an option.
Okay, so we're not going to be messing with anybody's properties at all?
No, sir.
Or their values.
Well, that's part of what goes with it if we, you know...
I will cover later today of one property that we will be proposing a change, and that was with the consent of the property owner.
With their consent?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So but other than that, nobody can... Nobody has to worry that, gee, my zoning's been changed now or, you know, affected in any way.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Correct, sir, yeah.
Take your phone off the hook, Ed.
When you guys say gross acre, do you mean that includes like the conservation, all of those things? So if we've got 20 acres, but 10 is conservation, the... You can still do, you know, for this... For instance, this low-density residential, it can still be five units and that total 20 acres, not just the 10 that's a residential.
It is gross, but conservation areas don't... You don't have density with those. Zero.
Got it. Okay.
Yep.
Mayor, YouTube resumed at 1:05.
Thank you.
But the audio continued the whole time.
The clerk, just make a note on... So that you know what the missing... In case somebody has a question, we'll be able to refer back to the presentation, which is available to everyone. Thanks. Okay.
Or we could just back up and start over.
Please, please continue.
Are there any other questions about Goal 1? We're breaking the future land use into separate goals and not asking for questions in the manner because this is a very large and complex element. So that's why we're deviating from our normal on this particular element. All right. So moving forward, Goal 1.2 deals with quality of life. As discussed in previous elements, you have just about 12,000 acres of conservation flume and residential and recreational lands, both public and private, which is about 20% of your total incorporated city. This does not include additional lands that may be in waterways or saltwater and freshwater canals or other such areas as conservation easements, stormwater, conveyance areas, which also add to additional open space.
And 20% in terms of your bigger, high-level studies is a good number. I know we're talking about quality of life. It's very difficult to apply, but how does that...
I think as we've evaluated on other elements, you have... Your community fits perfectly appropriately.
It's appropriate. Okay.
So Goal 1.2 deals with quality of life. It is to maintain the community's quality of life through preservation enhancement of environmental and community resources. Objective 1.2.1 emphasizes the preservation of natural resources and open space, identifies by... Identify, protect, and promote greenways, open spaces, and other identified natural resources through a variety of mechanisms. These mechanisms include, but are not limited to, public acquisition, development agreements, obtaining easements, and land development regulations, which should be addressed through ongoing amendments to the Land Development Code. We will do this by, one, identifying and protecting greenways, open spaces, and natural resources through acquisition easements and development regulations; and, two, supporting greenway and trail linkages between public and private open spaces and incentivizing public access easements. Objective 1.2.2 is to prioritize the improvement and maintenance of streetscapes by implementing plans and land development regulations to improve and maintain the city's streetscapes, including new landscaping and protecting existing natural vistas by enhancing the streetscapes, access designated gateways, corridors, enforcing regulations requiring new development to bury utility lines, and develop a comprehensive standards for lighting, signage, landscaping. And that is all of Goal 1.2. Are there any questions?
No. And I get the burying of the utilities. So that's specifically for, I guess, new development. It doesn't look backward at when we're upgrading roadways and other parts of the community that have already been built, or does?
It doesn't.
It does not? So strictly for new? Okay.
So I'd ask years ago that we tried to be better partners with FPL to try to make sure that they tell us when they're hardening their infrastructure. And unfortunately, I think a lot of that has already occurred. But when they're replacing the wooden powerlines with the concrete poles and upgrading their infrastructure, I think in the future, I'm not sure what is actually left in the Palm Coast area to harden, but they should... Our council should have the choice to underground at that time because I know it's super expensive. It's like another million and a half bucks a mile. But in the future, the council may have a taste for that for whatever reason. But I think engaging FPL in that regard to try to just be more collaborative in that process.
Okay. But it would dovetail into, I think, what they've written. It certainly wouldn't be prohibited by what I've read so far, so good. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So moving on to Goal 1.3 is adequate public facilities and concurrency, and this is where you're going to see a lot of redundancy to things that we've already discussed or we will be discussing in the capital improvement element. Your projected population by 2050, according to Bieber, is about 160,000 people, which will create additional demand for infrastructure and public facilities. You have a concurrency management to monitor... System to monitor the demands of those infrastructure, and this was an issue that was expensively talked about from the public, especially related to swales, stormwater management, drinking water, road maintenance, parks. Just making sure that in general, as the city grows, that there are public services and infrastructure systems to develop concurrently with the development, and that's what your concurrency management system is for. So Goal 1.3 is adequate public facilities and concurrency. The city shall ensure that the public facilities and services are adequate to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the public and are provided concurrent with the impacts of new development by Objective 1.3.1, ensuring adequate public facilities concurrent with new development, requiring that public facilities, infrastructure, and services shall be provided concurrent with the impacts of new development by maintaining public facilities to adopted level service standards, coordinating new development with public facilities through growth management measures, and ensuring development in areas with existing public facilities require developers to extend the facilities where deficiencies exist. 1.2 is to maintain a concurrency management system, implement a concurrency management system to ensure the issuance of development orders and development permits is conditioned with the availability of public facilities and services necessary to serve the new development, maintain and updating the concurrency management system through the Land Development Code, utilizing the concurrency management system to monitor and enforce adopted level service standards for roads, utilities, parks, and other services, conditioning issuances of development orders and permits based on the availability of necessary public facilities and services, and by annually reviewing the CMS to ensure the efficiency... To ensure it efficiently addresses public facility and service provision areas. Objective 1.3.3 adjusts public safety conditions, ensure that proper facility and program planning is conducted to ensure public safety needs by maintaining or improving ISO ratings for fire protection, flood payment management, and building code, develop and implementing a comprehensive five-year public safety plan in collaboration with Flagler County and the Sheriff's Office, regularly assessing and revising wildlife protection and mitigation regulations, and allocating resources for ongoing improvements for fire protection, flood payment management, and building safety. And that is the end of Goal 1.3. Are there any questions?
I mean, a good part of that is mandated by the state, I assume.
That's right.
Right, so it's just...
Is it appropriate to add in here an impact fee assessment, regular impact fee assessment for public safety, or does that go somewhere else? Because I've seen impact fee analyses in other portions for other items, but it's not here, and I do think that that's really important.
It's a good, great suggestion. Yep.
I didn't have any other questions.
If you're talking about impact fees for that, would you want to broaden that for other parts of the plan? Because there would be other types of fees as well.
Well, that's my point. It was in other parts of the plan.
Right.
But this public safety, there's no mention of it, so...
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to the section. Kathy's going to do it, but I'm going to call Greg McKinney up. We... You remember, City Council directed staff to add a sub-element of economic development to our plan. So we did that, and we worked with Craig and planning staff and our consultant to create a pretty decent, comprehensive plan on economic development, and we'll provide you the details. But again, yeah, we heard from, as Greg is coming up, from our community input. You can see the list. I don't need to go over this, but, you know, jobs, creating jobs. And so our element really took it from a comprehensive standpoint. So we will go through that with you right now.
So this is an optional element, and it is not an element that a lot of communities have, but I think you're going to be very happy with the results of this element that we, as a team, collaboratively put together. So Goal 1.4 is economic development. Foster a sustained economic environment to create employment opportunities, business growth, and diversified tax base. By Objective 1.4.1, a robust, diversified, and resilient local economic environment. Foster a dynamic and robust economic environment that targets industry sectors, anticipates future industry trends, and leverages local strengths to build a diversified and resilient economy by developing a future-focused economic development plan to anticipate industry trends and technological advancements, prioritizing industry sectors like advanced manufacturing, corporate headquarters, aviation and aerospace, logistics and warehousing, and healthcare training and research, and expanding workforce skills through partnerships with local educational institutions. Objective 1.4.2, target economic employment centers and jobs, create a thriving economic environment that attracts new industries and enables existing businesses to expand and creates workforce opportunities by implementing strategic land use planning, infrastructure enhancement, and community development practices in targeted locations and sites, by maintaining an inventory of economic employment hubs with development-ready sites and infrastructure, creating incentive zones to attract capital investment and develop critical infrastructure, and establishing mixed-use developments that integrate housing, commerce, and office Objective 1.4.3, investment in infrastructure, improve and extend the capacity of the city infrastructure, public services, and related facilities to accommodate the attraction and expansion of industries and businesses by optimizing existing infrastructures to support economic employment centers, ensuring extension of public utility services to lands designated for economic employment hubs, and aligning transportation planning with economic priorities to support future land use and development. Objective 1.4.4, business attraction and retention, implement strategies to market, recruit, and support new and expanding businesses by first creating sustained economic growth and enhancing quality of life, promoting the city of Palm Coast as a premier destination for business and investment, and three attracting industries that offer well-paying jobs. By marketing Palm Coast as a premier destination for business investment through regional branding, by conducting economic studies to identify targeted industry and develop strategies for sustained growth, by targeting recruitment efforts towards industries that offer well-paying jobs and contribute to economic diversification, and streamlining the permitting process and develop incentive programs to facilitate business relocation and expansion. And Objective 1.4.5, small business and entrepreneur development, implement policies that support and empower local entrepreneurs, provide comprehensive support to small businesses, streamline regulatory processes, and create a collaborative environment for growth and success by partnering with the Small Business Development Council and local educational institutions to provide business counseling and training, fostering collaboration between public and private sectors, implementing online system and streamlining regulatory processes, and promoting bi-local initiatives and incentives to boost locally-owned businesses. 1.4.6, support workforce development opportunities to attract, retain, and support entry-level workers and young professionals by creating comprehensive environment that addresses housing, employment, and education, community engagement, and quality-of-life factors resulting in a vibrant community that offers diverse opportunities for personal and professional growth. I will make a note that last week, when we presented this to the Plan Board, this particular objective, the Plan Board requested that we expand it so that it is not just about entry-level workers and young professionals, but all workforce.
Interruption, our grain just went down.
While we have a break, let me just make a comment. I think this is a fabulous addition to the plan, and it's an optional addition, but I think from what I'm hearing, we're very happy to have that as a part. I do have a question. I know you're not quite to the end, but do you think this fosters a stronger collaborative communication between business, the city, and the school district so that they are all communicating with each other to the positive benefit of economic development?
We will... There's an objective later that deals more stress specifically on the school district, but because that is in here, yes, I would agree with that statement. So continuing on with the Objective 1.4.6, which is the support of workforce development opportunities, which, as I mentioned last week, the Plan Board asked us to amend this particular objective to address all workforce, not just young. By promoting affordable housing options to support entry-level workers and young professionals, again, they asked us to expand that language. Support growth in industries offering career paths for entry-level workers such as technology and healthcare, creating internships and apprenticeship programs, investing in amenities and services that enhance quality of life, and partnering with flagr schools and other educational institutions to target job training. Objective 1.4.7, create a vibrant business climate, address the needs of existing businesses while attracting new investment and ensuring the city remains competitive in the global marketplace by assessing existing businesses and identifying strengths and areas for improvement in the economic structure, establishing fast-track permitting for targeted industries, implementing online permitting and licensing systems to enhance business efficiency and transparency, fostering an environment for encouraging foreign direct investment, and offering regular pre-application or due diligence meetings to applicants. Objective 1.4.8, maintaining a high quality of life. The city of Palm Coast is dedicated to maintaining a thriving, sustainable, and engaged community by expanding and maintaining green spaces, parks, and recreational areas, continuing to have responsive code enforcement, rental registration program, and foreclosed abandoned properties, and developing and maintaining a comprehensive infrastructure, including transportation and public facilities, and enhancing Palm Coast's appeal by emphasizing its branding, fostering hometown identity, preserving natural assets, promoting an active lifestyle, and celebrating cultural diversity. The reason this objective is found in economic development is we think that a high quality of life will help improve the attractiveness of Palm Coast for the workforce. And on that, that is the end of the economic development. Are there any questions?
No, I'll wait. I have questions, but I'll save for the end.
So with regards to Goal 1.4, should we add any type of reference to targeting or attracting applicable, or I guess, I don't know, some type of international businesses? So Craig, you and I spoke about this. We have a very strong and rich Russian and Polish community here. Should we try to attract or look at growing businesses? Because I was reading Trends Magazine, which we all get, Florida Trends, and one of the biggest trends is that we're seeing a lot of European businesses starting here in Florida because we're getting an influx of those populations. So I'm wondering if we have some type of objective to state that we key into what is suitable for our city here in Palm Coast to a large sect of the population and maybe try to grow economic development based on that. I don't know what that wording would be or what that looks like, but just a suggestion.
Would you think that might be aligned to a sister-city-type program? Because there are all the way up through the federal government programs that enhance the ability to target international markets or economic development initiatives that might benefit Palm Coast?
Yeah, I don't know. Like I said, I don't know what that language looks like, but...
Batista, bruxio. Means brother-in-arms, right?
But I do think that as a policy, when we do have such a rich diversity of culture here, the Portuguese as well, why not have a policy that says we recognize that and let's sink our teeth into it a little bit and see if we can bring in certain economic development, knowing that it will thrive because of those populations? Just something to consider. And then another consideration that I wanted to throw out there, when we talk about the... Where it says Objective 1.4.2, targeted economic employment centers and jobs, this kind of goes to what I think Councilwoman Hyder was saying earlier, which is, "We want to provide workforce housing, but we need jobs," right? So this goes hand in hand with having housing, but also having the jobs. We don't want one to get ahead of the other. So I am asking that in this policy, we somehow mention that this is going to be a data-driven decision-making process. So in other words, we don't say, oh, we need all this workforce housing, but then we don't have jobs for them, and we see them going to Jacksonville, St. John's County, Daytona, whatever it may be. And then we kind of get in the reverse problem where now these folks have jobs out of county, we start to bring in jobs that we can't then find workers for. So is there somehow some type of language that can be added to this objective to say that we're going to have a data-driven approach to ensuring a balance of workforce, or I guess, jobs, and also the housing to go with it? And again, I leave that language to you all, but I think conceptually, that's the way it should go.
It's my three-legged stool. I agree.
Or we could just say, hey, make sure the three-legged stool is in there.
Point is well taken.
That's a hard one to manage, to be honest.
You're trying to bring three elements together within a relatively short timeline. Otherwise, it becomes financially impossible.
And honestly, I think the marketplace will be...
But it's a good theme, and it's a theme that economic development would like to promote to those that might be looking at us.
Yeah.
That we are conscious of the fact that they're not going to move their business here if they know that we don't have a workforce that also has a place to sleep. I mean, that's the conversation.
And again, I think to your point, you may say we got the housing came first, and then people are taking jobs in Daytona or St. Augustine or Jacksonville, but then businesses say, hey, you know, they've got a good workforce down there, and then they may move in. I think it's going to... I think it's going to be market-driven in the end, but I think it's a, we should find a way to invite this to happen if we can through our...
But a good guiding principle for this plan.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
I have a question.
A mission statement.
Right, yeah. I have a question too, on the, in Objective 1.4.1, how is it that we prioritize these specific industry sectors? Because I don't think that we've had the industries, the targeted industry study come back before us, so I'm curious as to why these were chosen.
Sure. On that note, first, I think one question that'll be coming up soon is that the consultants producing that report will be presenting here on September 10th. And so with that, I guess the best way to answer that is, when the city approached the consultant on which industries, right, we wanted to see their feedback on the feasibility of, you know, that's really what this report is going to be coming back with. So the city, right, provided the consultants roughly six industries, and although we're still waiting on the final chapter of the report, based on those industries that we gave them, it's what the, it's what the report says, the feasibility of it. And so, not to get into spoilers, right, but a big part of this report, the components that we have received in draft version, it says repeatedly, right, any industry that we're talking about likely, but site readiness is going to be a key component in terms of attracting that. So to make sure, I try to answer your question though. You know, these industries, you know, advanced manufacturing, a very broad, right, topic that is more technology-based than, say, industry-based. Aviation and aerospace, you know, obviously where we're at in Florida, and Florida's dominant position in the aerospace industry lends us to being a player in that space. Logistics and warehousing, that's a long-winded topic, but essentially, right, we have the blessing of I-95 cutting right through us. So that makes that a natural pick, along with some things, talking about, what's the best way to say this, anticipating that forward focus, right? So logistics, distribution is part of that component. And then healthcare training and research, I think all of us, right, recognize the need and the desire for us to bring more healthcare opportunities, no matter what that looks like, whether it's healthcare services or medical device manufacturing, right? Two very different things. But I think everyone recognizes where we're going with that.
So just, I guess, a footnote then, I think this, and I appreciate that explanation, I do think that this should remain malleable, depending on what that study says. Because to say that we're going to prioritize industry sectors when we don't quite have that study back, I just want to make sure that we're basing it again on data.
And another factor too, in terms of the traditional approach here, I mean, you're evaluating, you'll be analyzing a market which is relatively close to full employment. So we're not looking at a traditional back-in-history market that was looking to increase employment dramatically, because we currently are getting close to that full employment level. So we probably would need to be more creative about how those additional jobs will be created and work into a, you know, a full backup, if you will.
Absolutely.
Anything else on this goal?
No, there's no mention of solar or anything related to the fiber infrastructure we have in the city of Palm Coast. I don't know if whether or not that's something that belongs in this.
I think technology in general, to kind of go on that, yeah. I mean, AI technology, I don't, I feel like that sector does have some legs right now.
Yeah, we just have really great broadband infrastructure now in the city of Palm Coast, so that is, you know, the lifeline for some of these companies.
Totally agree, but again, this underlying theme of prioritizing specific areas for employment growth so that we can actually go after them, and not be too broad-based so that we go after the whole world and end up with nothing, that we're very specific and dedicated. Because those folks that have the employment, the business, or the jobs will know if we are consistent in our efforts to develop those particular prioritized industries or sectors, which again, would come back from the study. Okay.
Now, just before we move forward, I've, we've got some comments. We put this as a sub-element, and just getting your suggestion, this is something new. Do you want us to put this as a standalone element? We can do that.
What is the, what do you mean this?
As part of the comp plan, have a totally separate and not have it as part of the future land use. Do you think that would be a little bit advantageous for us to do that?
I would, personally, as we talk about the city going forward, I would be proud to be able to talk about the fact that we thought it was important enough to include it as a standalone element. That's one opinion. I don't know about the rest of you.
I agree. I mean, I don't, it is kind of odd, and I understand why you put it here, to find a place for it, but I think a breakout element would be good, yeah.
It's fine.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
The final goal that I will go through before turning over to Ray to go through the new land use designation is annexation. Since 2009, annexation, you have annexed 7.3 square miles of the city. Historical annexations have been tied to receiving city utility services. Large annexations have occurred throughout your history. And as you can see in the map, this is your current boundaries. We are going to be sharing with you a new land use category that will amend this, and Ray will be going that, going that section. So Goal 1.5, annexation. Promote economic development and provide sufficient housing diversity, recreational opportunities, and natural resource protections for the adoption of an annexation policy. Your annexation policy is to develop an annexation plan and policies, explore opportunities to, for annexation for properties that can be used for commercial, industrial, and residential uses, particularly those that help diversify the housing stock and diversify the city's tax base by identifying and prioritizing annexation of lands that support commercial, industrial, and residential development goals, coordinating with neighborhood, neighboring jurisdictions to plan joint annexation areas and service provision, and establishing criteria for annexing lands that attract businesses, optimize city use services, and protect environmentally sensitive areas.
And we assume concurrency is included in all of that, underlying all of the necessary concurrent, you know, schools, fire stations, all those kind of things, which is naturally a part of all of that, right?
That's a good add. We'll add that. Okay, I lied. I have one more goal. Public participation. Goal 1.6, public participation. Provide public participation in the city's comprehensive planning process by providing a process for public participation, adopting procedures to encourage public participation in the comprehensive planning process, by establishing procedures to facilitate robust community engagement, notifying affected property owners of land use changes and map changes, conducting public hearings at convenient times, and utilizing multiple communication channels to keep citizens informed about planning activities and opportunities for input.
So you all are the experts on public participation, because you've just lived through that for the last, what do we say, 15 months? So are you, are you happy with the way it went? Would you adjust it? It sounds to me like it worked very, very well with the amount of traction and the amount of connection that you made.
I was just going to say, Mayor, that we, you know, the city and city staff and the public definitely is a great example of what we accomplished, being consistent with this goal. I'm very pleased of the participation that we received. I think Kathy could probably speak a little bit better, because I did this, you know, 2004, but she's done it through different communities around Florida, and I think, I'm not going to speak for you, Kathy, so you go ahead and say some words.
And the question I would ask Kathy is, I mean, what I'm hearing from you all is that with all of the feedback, all of the comments, I mean, I keep hearing a theme throughout that, that Palm Coast has proven to be a best place to live in Florida. I mean, I keep hearing that despite all the fine-tuning and things that we can also do, I keep hearing that through all of your policies and procedures that you're writing here.
I mean, we, you went through a very robust visioning effort, and you should be commended on that. And we've updated the plan to reflect that vision, so yeah, you should be very proud of yourself as a community.
Oh, no, proud of you guys. You guys did it, staff. I mean, we're just sitting here listening and getting the advantage of learning all of this from you, so congratulations to all of you.
Your staff has been exceptional, and all of them are to be commended for the amount of work that they have put through, foot forward throughout this effort, and have really gone above and beyond. We often hear from communities that they'll partner with us, but then we end up taking the line, share the work, and this has definitely been a partnership and a team effort. So we really appreciate all of the work from Ray and Brittany and the entire team, Jose, Fong, everyone.
We're not done yet, so.
But we keep getting more checkmarks.
We got more checkmarks, but we got still some work to do.
So long as we keep getting our checkmarks. All right, so on that, Ray is now going to go through our new land use category.
Okay, so as you know, from the beginning, that we did propose a new future land use designation of what we're calling master plan mixed-use future land use map designation. You know, again, we have a projected population of 157,000 over in 2015, and it's an increase of approximately 56,000 people. So where are those people going to go? They can't go north, can't go south, definitely can't go east, right? So we continue to grow. So the logical solution is west, and I think that's always been anticipated. Because we have existing today, if you see on the map where the star is, and below that star, we have approximately 12,000 acres that we currently have an approved development of regional impact application, and they're known as Old Brick Township. That is to the north where that star is, and just to the south is another DRI-approved called Neoga Lakes. They have entitlements, and they have approval for 12,000 homes, and 2.35 million of non-residential. So, you know, they have entitlements, it's existing now. Then where you see the light-colored green area of, it's a county designation, that's about 2,500 acres west of the railroad track, and has a county future land use designation currently on there. And then there's the 7,000 acres of what we call the future annexation area. That is the hole in the doughnut, so to speak. And if you look at the map there, probably the way you're facing, it would be on the east side of where the Old Brick Township is. That gap was always anticipated to be annexed into the city of Palm Coast. So totally, we have approximately, including all those, all those pieces of property, which fortunately now, we are dealing with one landowner. And that contains approximately over 20,000 acres, and we are proposing to designate that area as master plan use mixed-use. So, you know, going back a little bit, you know, what we heard from the community is commercial opportunities, parks and open space, walkable communities, greenway corridors, infrastructure, live-stage housing, historical resources, port tourism, you know, passenger rail, live, work, and play, looking at those guiding principles. So we, you know, worked hand in hand with this owner as a stakeholder, and what was really important for us, City Council, was that they were going to be part of this process. It was so important to go out to the community, to get the feedback for eight months, and to try to create a future land use map designation that would satisfy and be consistent with our guiding principles. Yes, we still have the DRIs that are out there now in the Neoga and Old Brick Township, but doing something differently, working with them to create something more special than the Neoga Lakes and Old Brick DRI. So that is the reason for our new land use, and we'll get into the details.
And Ray, just, if you just would make a footnote here or reinforce, Old Brick Township is not to be confused with the Old Brick Road.
Absolutely not.
Because people make that connection just so that it's not a confusing issue in the future. They are geographically not connected, related, or touching each other in any way.
That's a great point. It's just, it's just the name of what that large project was, Mayor. So if you look to the map on your right-hand side, you'll see kind of a lighter color. That is where, you can kind of compare to the left and to the right of where we're proposing this new future land use map category. So I'm going to go through this, and you have the package with a little bit more detail, but we do have a goal, and what we're, what we're trying to do from a broader perspective, from a 35,000-foot level, is we wanted to create these goals, objectives, and policies within our comp plan. And how this would be implemented would be through, it's requirement, through a master plan development agreement. That's where all the details will come in the future. That would be kind of the next step. But when that master plan development is, application, so to speak, would be provided to the city, we need to make sure and ensure that it checks all the checkbox boxes with this goal and these objectives and policies, that it's consistent, what we're saying here. So let me, let me go ahead and talk about Goal 1.7, master plan mixed-use. Create parameters for the development of a master plan mixed-use community in means that allows and promotes a mixture of uses with an integrated interconnected transportation network.
Ray, can I ask you just one really quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it'll help me as we go through this slide. When you say the master plan development agreement, are you talking about one agreement with that landowner for all 20,000 acres?
No, it, that would be the zoning portion. The zoning portion of that, I'm sure there's going to be different, potentially different agreements, you know, moving along, right? But what I'm talking about, what is in here, is the master plan, the zoning portion of it, that would need to be completed to implement this plan.
Okay, and then based on this, that's what then would help to frame the development agreement?
Exactly.
Got it, okay.
Exactly, yes. So Objective 1.7.1, community form. The master plan mixed-use flume designation will include an interconnected system of greenways within a greenway corridor overlay, a mix of diverse land use types to promote a development form of greater variety than is presently available in the city, provide for job opportunities proximate to housing, and strive to ensure mixed-use areas including civic, cultural, and recreational uses. Master plan mixed-use designations will be served by a regionally significant interconnected transportation network, and accommodate a wide variety of mobility options, including street, bike, pedestrian facilities, trails, transit, including low-speed and autonomous vehicles where appropriate, and smart technology systems to assist users in wayfinding and transitioning between travel modes. Complete streets will be incorporated, and locations for transit corridors and transit stops will be considered in the planning and design of the transportation network. An interconnected multi-use trail network will provide connections in strategically identified areas connecting residential neighborhoods, shopping, employment, education, recreation, and civic facilities. So some of the summary of supporting policies include establish, what I talked about before, establish a master plan development process to implement these objectives and policies. That's how, how we would implement it. To provide an overall, now, now, the thing that's interesting is that this, in the comp plan, what's proposed is that the overall density of these acres is 1.2 units per gross acres. So if you really, you know, think about it, right, if you look at the ITT plan from an aerial standpoint, you'll see you're approximately four units per acre. So this really is, in the whole picture of it, a low-dense project, and that's because of the preservation of, and the utilization of open space and recreation. 50% of this property will be, will be used for that open space and recreation. So also implementing that policy elicited defining elements of greenway corridor overlay and elements to address as part of the MPD. So if you could see on your map here, now, this isn't set in stone. So if you could see on your map here, now, this isn't set in stone. This is, you know, done through kind of aero interpretation, kind of discussions. But if you look at the green hatched area, that is some of the greenway corridor that we're looking at. And if you all remember, when I was talking about, when we had the conservation and coastal element here, we talked about wetlands and isolated wetlands, and the importance of creating these larger corridors from the big picture. I talked about St. John's River Water Management District strategies of the banks, right, of creating some of these large corridors. So if you can look on this map, you will see some of those hatched areas that would be incorporated. It's not just county-bound, it follows into St. John's, it follows to the south. So creating these large corridors have some really good environmental, not only environmental, wildlife corridors, good opportunities for some really cool things that could happen there. And then we talked about, and y'all are really familiar with this, of, it talks, the overlay or the designation talks about, describes a regionally significant transportation network, how key that is. And we even talked about, and you will talk about, the transportation element, but establishing those east-west connectors, not only north and south, but we know that the state is also excited about the possibility of these corridors as well for transportation network. So Objective 1.7.2 talks about the overall mixed uses, okay? So includes policies to establish criteria for residential neighborhoods, shopping, employment, education, recreation, and civic facilities. So again, I spoke about at least 50% of the lands will be set aside for recreation and open space. Ensure a mixed use. Development standards are met to promote a balanced community environment. Minimum non-residential standards are built out, so ensuring a mixed use, right? So what we have in this policy is we have a minimum of 50 square feet of retail service space per unit that would be established in that development, and we did the same thing for 60 square feet of workplace will be provided for per unit in the employment center. So this is a broad policy, but what it provides us is assurances, reasonable assurances, that we will have a bona fide mixed use. We know there's market changes, right, where you have more residential or more commercial time, but it's that balanced approach where it provides assurances in our plan that it would be a mixed use development. You're going to not have a high, heavy, heavy residential, all residential, there's going to be a mixed use component to this. And then Objective 1.7.3, it talks a little bit about, where we talk about definitions. Because the area is so large, and it really makes sense that development will, you know, most likely start on the east side of the project, and you saw how much land is there, 40,000 acres, right, that they can continue to have civil culture activity, same thing we did for Palm Coast Park. But I'm here for any questions that you may have on these policies.
So Ray, the transportation piece, which you kind of showed in a prior slide, so you've already had, you know, discussion obviously with the TPO, the DOT, the state on all of those, because those are very long-term initiatives, which are kind of game changers for the future of the region. So when does this actually become part of a work plan in terms of the, let's say, the TPO, for example?
Yeah, I think, you know, once we get the comp plan, you know that the Florida Department of Transportation is a review of our comprehensive plan.
Right.
So they're going to see this, and they already are aware of it, and we're kind of beginning the process now.
So the state review triggers the other agencies to have a hard look, okay?
That's right.
Do you have any questions, Vice President?
I do not, go on.
So for the background for Goal 1.7 and 1.8, I'm trying to make this a little more tangible because there's a couple different mathematical units that are used. If this is over 20,300 acres and 50% has to be, well, let me ask you this, are you using recreation and open space interchangeably with conservation?
There, we are, yes. We are, what we're wanting to do is create a large corridor. We don't know the details of that corridor yet. That's why we put the minimum, kind of the broader 35,000-foot level of creating 50% of open space or recreation. Yes, some of those areas well, very well might be conservation in the long run. Some of those areas could be open spaces, right? Some of those areas, you want areas for wildlife movement, you want those movements and those ability from an environmental component, but you also, it's advantageous to have these areas for recreational component as well. There's kind of a balance there. So we don't know all the details of how this would be created yet.
So, and I can appreciate that, and thank you for that honest answer. Is a retention pond considered open space?
A retention pond could be considered open space.
Okay, so I have a really big issue then with using the term open space interchangeably with conservation. They are not the same thing. So what I don't see anywhere in this master plan mixed use designation is actual conservation. That word isn't even listed. We need to determine, especially in Palm Coast, how that fits into this. It's my understanding that with this land specifically, and we are lucky that we're dealing with one landowner, right, that they do have the intent of having a lot of conservation, but without having that in here and having a minimum standard of what we are going to require in keeping with what is a wonderful thing about Palm Coast, I think we're selling ourselves short. So I don't know how that fits into the amount of recreation open space. I would imagine that it's going to, if there's 30% recreation open space and 20% conservation, I don't know how that fits right now, but I think it's important that we're more specific as to that.
So I think really in the master plan development side of thing, the zoning portion, when we get into those details, I think that's really the mechanism where we can really get down and understand where that is, because at this point, we don't know where, if we, we're going to put, what is going to be conservation at this point.
I agree with you, but we, as of right now, we're not requiring it. You see what I'm saying? Like, as of right now with the policy, no conservation is required at all. So we could just have a bunch of retention ponds, and we get rid of all of our natural, whether it's silviculture or not, doesn't matter, we're getting rid of nature. So I do think that there needs to be reference specifically to that. And then, and I can get with you guys separately. Again, I'm trying to kind of formalize all this in one type of unit. So when we're looking at the acreage, it says it's approved for 12,000 homes. How does that break down to acreage? And I only am asking for these numbers so that I can see overall, what are we looking at now versus what it could become in the future? So I can ask for that separately, but, you know, I wanted to throw that out there for my colleagues in case anybody else is curious about that. And then the other question...
Wait, could you repeat that last question real quick? The 12,000 homes on the 1169 acres? What was the question, breaking that down?
No, 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 because it says there's, yeah, so 11,690 acres, but that includes 2.35 million square feet of non-residential. So I'm trying to figure out what that break...
Understood.
Yeah, trying to figure what that breakdown is.
Got it.
And then one thing I was going to suggest, because we do kind of have a nice, fresh palette here, and I don't know if this should be a policy or if it's just something that we put in land, the LDC, I'm not sure, but building around the natural resources and incorporating them when possible, I feel like that should be a policy because it's pretty high-level. So some type of policy that says, when possible, to incorporate and build around natural resources, make an effort to do that. Like, we're not handcuffing anybody to doing that, but making that an overall goal or objective, I think is positive, in that we're meeting that conservation and that open space requirement, and we're also probably creating some pretty cool elements in that we're keeping some natural integrity and then building around it.
And I think, I think also...
I forget the language.
I don't know, I leave that to them.
It's a collaborative effort to engage the natural environment without, you know, changing it, I guess. I mean, there's probably a way to say it.
Yeah, one of the most awesome things to me, when you're driving down Palm Coast Parkway and you get on the hard, under the hard canopy, I mean, that is, that's really cool. And so we've been successful with that, right? So incorporating those types of elements out west, I think, should be a goal and a policy for us.
Sure, I mean, and you've got terms that we haven't heard a lot of yet, in terms of greenway, animal trail, and their corridors, so yeah, I think everybody's in agreement that that would be a best practice to, and some of the, some of the examples of other communities that we've looked at for research have incorporated that concept, so certainly an underlying, and you've actually said that that's also the intent of use.
Yeah, I think, I think also too, some of the opportunities that we don't necessarily have here in the city, there could be some great opportunities out there, and maybe not building around nature, right? But maybe there's opportunities within this greenway corridor that you actually build in nature, so to speak, on the periphery of this greenway corridor, where maybe you, maybe we do have some camping or some of those type of opportunities where people were coming down, you know, we talked about, you know, people visiting Palm Coast and staying here, you know, we talked about the recreational area...
Eco-tourism piece.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I think, I think there's opportunities here to be able to accommodate that.
Another good example would be, so your DOT is now, when they're building major projects, they're actually, you know, figuring out where the wildlife corridors are going to be so that they're not obstructed by, you know, new transportation corridors and things like that. So we'd just be following suit with what some of these, you know, major capital investment players are doing.
And I think I would like to see, and I know this is kind of out there, but at some point, a little more detail on what we define as recreation. Because camping, which is something you just mentioned, you know, I would consider that to be, to a degree, recreation, you know, bringing your camper, setting up a tent, whatever. But also, you know, hunting can be defined as recreation, too. So I mean, it's a whole, I sort of want to know where we're going with this.
It's just pickleball I have a problem with.
I was going to say pickleball and pickleball, the list is short, yeah.
But a bowling alley is recreation for some folks. It's just, it's a lot of different things, so I think, I know we can't paint every little picture here, but I think we should just have a broader vision of what we're going for.
And tie it back to your point earlier, what is Palm Coast, and what do we want Palm Coast to continue to look like into the future?
No, that's a good point, because technically bowling could be commercial or recreational, so to, yeah, to further...
Some people consider sitting on a park bench drinking beer recreational, so.
I like that form of recreation, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments.
Appreciate it.
And then the last one here was vested development rights. This has to do, this really needs to be moved on our first chapter, that we talked about property rights. This was recognize vested development rights, recognize a property owner's vested rights and development, maintaining its property. Ensure property owners' vested right are respected under the 2050 comprehensive plan. Recognize developments of regional impact approved before the plan adopted and still effective. So like I said, started off, we have more than one development of regional impact that already has entitlement, so we plan on moving this section over to our Chapter 1 for property rights.
I do have one comment, and it may not be long here, but I didn't see the mention of rail anywhere to date. Now, I don't know if it belongs here, but that's a different universe to some extent.
No, that's exactly right, Mayor. We definitely, as one of those opportunities for this area, is where we have the rail line, and we talked about those job centers, having freight, having those opportunities that we have, and we talked about passenger rail as well for this area. So it should be in here, and we'll make sure it is.
One comment that I have about this Goal 1.8 is, and I had this comment when we talked about Chapter 1, is instead of stating that it's vested development rights, why don't we just make it broadly property rights? We're not taking away from the development, the developers' rights, gosh, it's a long day. But we're including other property owners as well, and to that, I would say that under Objective 1.8.1, it should state that we recognize a property owner's vested right in developing, maintaining, and enjoying its property. That way, we're encompassing all types of property owners and not just those developers.
Thank you for that.
Any other?
I think you've questioned us out for the moment.
Okay. Mayor, you have, you're moving on, you have two more chapters to go, transportation and capital. They're a little bit shorter, but if you thought you needed five minutes, maybe now would be a time.
Do you want to stand up for five minutes, or are you good?
It's up to you guys.
Up to you.
I can just stand up and stretch out.
All right, so let's take five minutes just to stand up for that. Quarter after.
Calisthenics, jumping jacks?
Sitting on a park bench drinking beer?
I know.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah.
So I'm just like, all right, buddy, are you going to work with me tonight or you're not, you know?
Hate to say this, but it makes me feel glad I'm a man.
That's right, yep, yep.
My sister would call it mommy juice, the wine.
I read her response from the webster she's looking at.
Oh, I have FPL.
Do you need to leave at 2:45?
Um, no, I can stay.
Okay, I would hope we, well, yeah, I think we'll be closing.
There we go.
Hopefully about an hour.
So you spoke to her at FPL?
Yeah, I sent her an email, and she responded that they're looking into it.
And they will get in touch with that person, I think?
I asked them to have a customer representative call them and to provide us feedback on what's going on. So as soon as I get more info, I'll send it back to you.
Yeah, somehow I was pregnant. I would say about three and a half, four months in.
That's even worse.
Total waste. Yeah, I'm like, what's the point of this? If it didn't taste good even, it's like they're wasting calories, you know? I didn't eat before, but yeah, and now I drink the half-caf. Yeah. Right, exactly.
I mean, you can't call...
Yeah, so it's funny because I never drink coffee without your parents. And then after like six months in law school, I would get mentees, and there's three shots in a, I would get one. Three shots espresso, so then after law school, I was like, all right, I really need to cut down on the coffee, right? So then I went down to, what's the next one down, Grande, and then finally made it down to Hall. Somebody, I was at a meeting or something, and they ordered me a cup of mentees, you know, thanks for coming, whatever got me a mentees cup. I looked at this thing, and I was like, how did I drink these, just like, at least twice a day when I was...
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
Yeah. Right. Right, right, yeah, it's unbelievable.
I didn't drink coffee until I was 20 years old. Yeah, it's wild.
Yeah, yeah.
My dad would have coffee every single morning, but I never drank it until I was 15.
Oh, really? See, I didn't broke it, my mom never drank coffee, still doesn't. My dad does, but I lived with my dad, so.
It almost caused my parents to get divorced because my dad would come home from work at 5 o'clock, he'd say, can I have a coffee? My mom would say, sure.
And Jim would say, no.
When I was at 3:40, my dad found the can of decaf at my house behind the record room. She had been having a decaf.
Oh, my gosh, that is epic.
Totally, yeah. Her argument was like, you didn't notice?
Right, right.
Didn't mind me how long?
That's hilarious. I'm surprised he didn't notice though, because I noticed a difference.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, even with the half-caf, I noticed a difference, yeah. Because I like the, I like Starbucks, right, so I like kind of the whole bean, so I definitely noticed a difference, yeah.
My dad didn't.
That's so funny.
My dad was a big smoker, so I don't know how much it really tasted or anything like that.
Oh, yeah, maybe, yeah, definitely would have liked it. Yeah, the half-caf isn't bad, actually. I don't mind it, Green Mountain makes a pretty good one.
Covering capital, huh? I thought Jose would...
Jose will.
Yeah.
I don't, doesn't matter.
I told, I, we didn't tell you, I, I was sitting, just sitting out there.
Oh.
They had a lot of restaurants over there. And their coffee is ready to straw.
It's supposed to be tea, so it's the white tea.
Yes. And so, well, we went out to one of their restaurants, my husband and I, for dinner one night. And they were like, welcome back to the place. Okay, so we go, and we go, any big thing, right?
Is it Addison?
I, I couldn't, I was bouncing off the walls. What is in this? It was, you know, they're Iraqi. So whatever it is, it's a drink.
My first career in the military.
I mean, I was like, how do they drink this? I was bouncing off the walls.
It's cultural, you know?
Yeah, they, they used to, I suppose.
Get used to it, to some extent. I don't know if your body actually, I guess your body does it to some extent.
Or shira, some, maybe shira is better.
Ed, you ready?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
All right, we're all back.
All right, welcome back to Dan. TJ Elton on the ones and twos.
Shuffle the, oh, spin, spinning the wheels here, okay.
In high school, they used to let me do the morning announcements, and I never deviated from what I was reading. And looking back now, I'm like, I had the biggest opportunity to be a clown, yeah.
That surprises me that you did.
Yeah, nope, I followed all the rules. I know, I feel you. I must have developed that later on.
There, there was a request, since the segments are rather long, if we could start off with public comment, just to get caught up. So if everybody's okay with that, so I could have consensus. So let me call for public comment at this time on the sections that we just covered.
Thank you, Sandra Schenk, again. I would like to speak regarding the master plan mixed use.
We just bring it closer.
I would like to speak regarding the master plan mixed use. First of all, because of the significant nature of this project, one thing is my recommendation for a retreat, a workshop of some sort between the city council, planning board, and staff. I think it would be very beneficial, because this is a huge opportunity for us to get it right when we have limited resources within the city, to meet the needs of our growing community. I don't know if you're familiar with the historical and cultural significance of Nioga Lakes. So if you're not, I would highly encourage you to visit out there. There's a portion of that is actually the highest point in Flagler County, which is going to be extremely valuable. So though we are talking about having the diversity of housing stocks, housing stock, the value of this land is going to be extremely significant as climate change takes place. I would encourage you to look up what climate gentrification is, and look at how it has impacted the city of Miami and residents there, climate gentrification. The other thing I would like to speak about is in regards to the concurrency management system. We know that we do have some issues currently with being out of capacity and with our water treatment facility, one of our facilities. I would like to suggest looking at our concurrency management system, the type of software that we're using, to see if it will allow for real-time updates with the various departments, so we can be, they can be abreast and aware of where the changes are taking place, so we don't run into a situation where we are in a desperate need because of a lack of infrastructure. So I think, I don't know what the software is, it's just a recommendation. But I think so that there's continuity between departments, and we are aware of the change, of the needs as the community grows. Be, if we had a software system, that's a live software system, that would definitely help. And then the other thing is, I would recommend that some of the things be shared with city council, that were recommendations from the planning board regarding economic development. Because there were some planning board members that had some excellent ideas regarding mentorships through, intergenerationally. So basically, our retired community being able to mentor some of our young professionals up and coming, even with coordinating with our high schools. And then lastly, regarding the policy to attract foreign businesses, I believe to restrict or limit economic development to attract specific demographics is, would be a misuse of taxpayers' dollars. I think if we looked at the International Chambers of Commerce, it has a very lengthy membership, and it will be able to touch on various businesses throughout the world, and not just specific regions. And lastly, just to say how important that is, is, you know, you look at an African-American female that grew up in the inner city of Miami, wearing Pakistani clothing, who loves Jollof rice and cassava from Nigeria, you know, from Africa, you know, and I love Portuguese baked goods. So I think we need to look at diversity and open that opportunity through the International Chambers of Commerce.
Very good. Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public want to make a comment on what we've covered so far? Then I'll come back to the day. Is any comment here?
I have none.
I just want to respond, Sandra. I did not mean to limit it. I, I just want to be, I want to be very clear. I'm not saying that we should only look to those regions, but I, I do think that it's a good example of how we could, it could flourish here because of those populations. But I agree with you, it should be opened up. I, I no means meant to limit it to those. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. All right, then, we'll close public comment. We'll have one more public comment, though, at the conclusion of the meeting. So if you'd like to go ahead and proceed, you have two chapters left?
Two more chapters, Mayor. This one is, they're both shorter. This one is the transportation element. And just a quick, brief introduction, you know, we did get a lot of stuff from the community, but we tried to take a broad approach on this, because traffic's not just widening roads. It, it's a lot of different tools in toolbox. But Fong will take the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This is the transportation element. And what we have heard from the community, these are all the feedback that we got, we received, such as enhanced transportation, improved road maintenance, widening up roads, much more traffic control, all the way to Amtrak, Bright Line, light rail system and bus. So in my opinion, is that the policies that we have in the transportation element encompass most, if not all of it, the, the feedback that the community provided. There are certain areas that, that are constrained, that because we do not basically manage that. For example, public transportation, the funding goes right through the county, so we don't manage that. So, and, and the need is not there. For example, we don't have fixed route, but we have paratransit. So until the need is, is imminent, then basically, we will move to that, for example. The other part is that, for example, more traffic control. We, we, even if we have funding, we cannot basically provide every intersection with traffic signals. Because if it's not basically warranted, we are in huge liability if something happens there. So with that, I just want to provide it to you, that the, these policies do address most, if not all, the community feedback. So the transportation element, along with the future land use element, is the cornerstone upon which the other elements of the comprehensive plan are built. So the future land use element basically provides the entitlement. And based on that entitlement, that's how we will assess transportation. The transportation element takes an all-inclusive approach to the development and maintenance of the city's transportation system by setting mobility standards and thresholds for future development and redevelopment. Some of the standards and thresholds that are established in the plan include level of service, transportation concurrency, street classification, future street improvements, access management, interconnectivity standards, street maintenance, and safety operation. So in this element, basically there are four goals, 18 objectives, and 111 policies. So I will go through all the goals and objectives as written, but will summarize the policies under each objective. So if you, you, you look at the comprehensive look, is basically, Goal One talks about the network, level of service, road network level of service. Number Two talks about interconnectivity. How do we tie those roadway systems together in order to make it comprehensive? And then Third, we are huge on trails, basically, on multi-purpose path. So we're gonna look at expanding that. We currently have approximately about 150 miles of that. And then as we move for west, we're gonna also, basically gonna provide an interconnective trail system as well, too. And then lastly, we're gonna talk about maintenance and repair. So Goal 2.1, street network level of service, expand and maintain the city's street system that provides safe accessibility and mobility to all residents, businesses, and visitors, and maintains unacceptable level of service. So there are two important words here, key words, accessibility and mobility. So for ulterior, you know, collector railways, the purpose of that is for mobility. For local roads, we're talking about accessibility. So Objective 2.11, adopting and maintaining unacceptable level of service, develop, adopt, and maintain a comprehensive level of service standard for all roads within the city of Palm Coast, and implement a proactive monitoring and improvement strategy. So the policies supporting this objective include develop and maintain a comprehensive level of service standards for all city roads. So we adopted level of service D, which is basically the most cost-effective level of service, that I would say 99.9% of the jurisdiction in Florida adopted that level of service. Implement proactive monitoring and improvement strategies, regularly assess road segments using biannual traffic counts, develop improvement plans for road segments nearing acceptable level of service. So last year, in the fall, we had a citywide traffic count. And based on that traffic counts, all of our level of ser, all of our segments, roadway segments, basically is right, at level of service D or, or better. So we have no issues citywide. And we did the travel demand forecast for 2030, and we looked at there are several segments that are needing improvements. And I'll list it here, but on the next map, you can see here, it's easier for you to take a look at it. So you see that Matanzas Wood is in green there, it needs to go to four lane from US1 to basically I-95. And I-95 from Palm Coast Parkway to the city limit, would need to go to eight-laning. And then the portion of, in purple there, which is State Road 100, between Belter to I-95, needs to go to six-laning. And then this is the recommended improvements for 2050. You can see that there are other segments, basically based on the projected population of approximately about 158,000. These are projected to be needing improvements. And the map also indicating here, as you can see, that portion of Matanzas crossing I-95 to Oakings Road would need to go to four lane. I-95 north of Matanzas, north of Palm Coast Parkway to Matanzas is looking at to go to eight-laning. And then a portion of US1 between Whiteview to Royal Palm needs to go to six-laning. And then, as you can see on 100, a portion of it, approximately between Bulldog to Oakings Road would need to go to eight-laning. And east of that, from Oakings Road to Cooper Lane would need to go to six-laning. So these are the recommended based on the travel demand forecast software that we use, the region use, basically. And, but don't be too alarmed in basically that how we're gonna have the funding in order to do this. Basically, we are looking at the impact of these developments is another huge factor. We don't know when these residential development or commercial development will be impacted or be online. So as we continue, we'll monitor that. And every two years, we take citywide traffic counts as well in order to monitor that process.
So these recommendations are merely forecasts or what-ifs when those population numbers are approached, could be in the far distant future. This is not a short timeline that you're talking about here. Could be 20, 30 years on some of these projects, right?
Yes, sir. And, and other factors would help to divert traffic as well. For example, as you can see, Palm Coast Park along US1, we have basically permitted approximately over 2,000 units, but there's no commercial district up there right now. But if there are district commercial, you know, basically constructed, it, it will basically divert the traffic toward that area.
Create a new pattern that we're not, that we're not currently suffering with, yeah?
Right. And it could reduce, you know, traffic elsewhere as well. So. And Objective 2.12 talks about concurrency management system. We'll continue to enforce and update as necessary the city's CMS to ensure that functional transportation facilities and services are available to the public concurrent with the impacts of new development. And the policies supporting this is to enforce concurrency regulations for new developments, conduct concurrency evaluation for land use modification, exempt specify developments from concurrency requirements, and mitigate roadway impacts of developments through funding or construction. And Objective 2.13 talks about the transportation modeling and traffic analysis zones. So this is solely related to the central Florida regional, planning regional model that basically, that needed these type of updates for the, the, the traffic analysis zones. So as you can see, that every 10 years, we have the census data, it has the census blocks. And part of that, within that census block, we further subdivide that into what we call it traffic analysis zones, in order to model the, the attraction of developments on the network. So in cooperation with Flagler County, Refer to See Transportation Planning Organization, and DOT, conduct review and update every five years, which is required by the TPL, will be updated. So the TPL is in the process of updating that, starting in the fall, the Long Range Transportation Plan. And we're gonna be part of that as well. Revise the TASs and the Florida Standard Urban Model. We call it the Pursuitiveness Model, so as to provide the tools needed to manage growth and related traffic within the city to ensure consistency of road projects and the CIE with any approved amendments to the future flume. And the policy relating to that is review and update the TASs every five years, align TASs with current and future development, and coordinate with regional entities for the Pursuitiveness Updates, ensure tasks, accurately estimate travel demand, and support land use planning. So humanly, we cannot do this without computers, without software. So because there are thousands and thousands of iterations in order to run the software, in order to project an, an, an impact to like, let's say, one segment. If we want to take a look at, let's say, Belter between Royal Palm to East Hampton, it would take a typical computer about 28 hours in order to do it. With a much better computer, we could do it within about six hours. So it, it's a lot of iteration in order to do that. That's why it's important that we have this part of the, the policy. The next objective is 2.14, transportation improvements. The city will develop a short-range, five-years, and long-range, 25-years transportation plans that will identify current and future transportation deficiencies, and identifies improvements in the roadway network based on the adopted flume. improvements in the roadway network based on the adopted, uh, flume. Develop strategies, including corridor studies, to address and identify deficiencies. So the policy supporting that is to develop short and long-range transportation plans, identify and prioritize roadway improvements, coordinate funding with DOT and other sources, and conduct corridor studies to address projected deficiencies. So, uh, as part of, um, a member of the TPO, the last, um, bullet here, conduct corridor studies to address projected deficiency, is very beneficial for the city, is that because we can basically tap into the, the funding in order to conduct studies, uh, and, and they will fund that for us. Objective 2.15, enhance east-west connectivity and regional road network development. Develop a comprehensive network of east-west connections to improve regional connectivity. Support, uh, westward expansion and enhance evacuation routes, creating an efficient, uh, transportation system that aligns with the city's growth strategies and the, uh, 2050 transportation plan. Let me go back to one of the, uh, maps, so you can see. This one. The, um, network on the west side of US 1 and west of the FEC line, as you can see, eaten red. Um, it's important that we, we did conduct, um, corridor studies to extend Matanzas Wood, Palm Coast Parkway, Whiteview, and Royal Palms, uh, further west. We have that study already, and it has been identified, recommended, the, uh, right-of-way width in order to acquire that. So the first part we're looking at is extending, uh, Matanzas Wood, and then loop it south where, and connect it to, uh, Palm Coast Parkway. So that loop there that you can see is part of the future planning, but, um, and, and if you look at further west, you can see a red line, that's what we call it, the County Road 2209. That eventually will connect it to the 2209 in St. Johns County, and then eventually it will connect down to 305 in, in Flagler County and, and to the land. So, when the state legislature looked at this, and DOT has been always wanting to have a parallel corridor to I-95. And that's why they are basically very, um, excited about this, and they are supporting it. And, uh, through the last two, uh, budget year, we received over $100 million for the extension, for this loop road, we call, from, um, Matanzas to Palm Coast Parkway. Let me get back to, uh...
Oh, and you mentioned, just to close that up, you mentioned the land. I think you also might wanna mention that it actually intersects with, uh, I-4, as you get down there, right?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah. It, it, once we reach to the land, it will, uh, connect it to, uh, I-4, that's correct. So in order to do this, basically, the policy supporting this is develop comprehensive east-west connections and seek partners and funding. And that's what we've been doing. Prioritize construction based on growth patterns and funding. Conduct feasibility studies for new connections and protect future right-of-way, and design for multimodal transportation and evacuation routes. And these are the, um, preliminary, um, uh, short-range and, and long-range transportation plan that we provided in the element. The next objective is 2.16, feasibility study of new, uh, interstate I-95 interchange to improve traffic flow and enhance evacuation routes. The city shall collaborate with key state agencies and key stakeholders to conduct comprehensive studies to determine their feasibility and optimal location for potential new interchanges on Interstate 95. Mayor, you, um, mentioned about the network toward, toward the west, and we are aware of that. Um, but however, we are waiting for the governor, I, I believe, is, has been, uh, signed by the governor already, that the TPO boundary will expand to the county's, uh, boundary. So, uh, once it's expanded like that, then we basically are able to, um, uh, provide, apply for, basically, funding for what is gonna be, uh, part of, uh, the city of Palm Coast. Also, when it's expanded, um, we will be part of the, called the, uh, metropolitan region, or urbanized region. And if it's urbanized region, then, uh, based on federal, uh, highway, we are able to have, um, interchanges at every mile, instead of every five miles. So right now, you can see from Matanzas to Palm Coast is about five miles, Palm Coast to, um, uh, 100 is about five miles for an interchange, because at that time, we are basically in the rural or transitional area, which doesn't qualify us for that. So we still iron, uh, two air, uh, two locations for, uh, the east-west connection for I-95 interchange is at Whiteview, uh, connecting toward, uh, Oakings, and also Sesame or Citation to Oakings Road. Uh, there are some land reserved, or, or we already purchased that, um, and so we gotta move toward for the future in order to acquire additional, uh, land, uh, for con- those connections.
If I could just add, the, the inclusion of all of Flagler County into the, uh, TPO is just a, uh, a legal requirement of the apportionment plan, and it's just, uh, administratively waiting for the governor's signature. There's no decision-making involved. It's a natural evolution of population growth.
Yes, sir, that's right. And then, uh, objective 2.17, facilitate the use of alternatives to the Interstate I-95 for local travel. So to reduce traffic on Interstate 95 and enhance emergency response and evacuation capabilities, the city shall continue its program to expand the city's north-south parallel reliever, uh, roadways to I-95, Belter, um, and Oakings Road, eventually also 2209. Um, funding assistance shall be solicited from DOT and private developer interests where appropriate. As you know, we have the Oakings Road special assessment there as well, emphasizing the dual purpose of traffic mitigation and public safety enhancement. So the policy supporting this is, uh, expand north-south parallel reliever roadways, Belter and, uh, Oakings Road. Solicit DOT and private developer funding for traffic mitigation and public safety enhancement. Conduct corridor study on Palm Harbor Parkway to assess improvement needs. Encourage interstate travelers to use local roadways by requesting I-95 signage for local travel exits. So at, at this time, you, uh, we have full funding to, um, expand Oakings Road from north of Palm Coast Parkway to Farnham. So that's the first, uh, improvement that you will see probably next year, starting next year. Uh, we also look and study on the south and, uh, north of Towns, uh, Center Boulevard, um, and we're gonna look at feasibility to basically address the, uh, existing kind of congestion at, the Town Center and Oakings Road and Royal Palms, that all those three, uh, or two intersections there. So we are looking to that. And, and, and part of this is the, to alleviate, uh, interstate, as you are aware, last several years, we have, um, major, um, accidents on I-95, and basically, it's congested, uh, you know, Oakings Road and, and US 1 and Belter.
Is that, is that why that objective 2 dot 1 dot 7 exists, is for safety, essentially?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Because for me, I hop on the highway all the time, just to go from one end to the town to the other, and I, I would've thought that we would've been promoting that to kinda keep everybody out of the arterial roads, but if it's for safety, that makes sense, because there have been, it always occurs right at the interchanges, so that's fair.
Yeah, we, we probably gotta, uh, we gotta request, um, the widening of four lanes of Oakings Road all the way from Matanzas down to, probably, uh, to, um, Volusia County.
If I may not belabor the, or waste time with you today, but it's my understanding that there are, there's a high number of, of highway accidents on I-95 in our, between our, uh, interchanges. And I, I can never get an answer as to why. I mean, it's not something that we can affect, but, uh, I think we're higher than the norm, or certainly higher than we should be, especially with the, the zero, uh, the zero policy coming in, um, for our inclusion in the TPO in the future. Any, any reason, any rash, any explanation there?
Based on my experience, I'm, I'm not sure what the, uh, we, we, we did look at the design criteria, uh, on I-95 area, uh, we haven't found any, basically, um, any error in design.
Because this is, this is people going through us, it's not, this is not our local residents on and off, this is just people whizzing through, um, the area.
And I worked for, uh, St. Johns County for 14 years, and then we have the same area, basically, right at IGP, north of IGP, has the most type of, uh, you know, accidents on I-95, and we studied that with DOT, and we just couldn't find any reasons why, and so, it, it just happened like that. It could be that people probably got out of Jacksonville, congested, and now they have just a straight shot now south, and could be, you know, that, that's the case, I'm not sure, yeah. Objective 2.18, we're talking about rail, multimodal, and airport facilities. To the extent feasible, support the development of safe, convenient, and energy-efficient rail and airport facilities, and provide opportunities for the creation of a multimodal system that interconnects all transportation modes, provides new modes of passenger transportation, and encourages industrial and commercial development in the city through improved, uh, freight facilities. So the policy supporting that includes support Flagler County's efforts to enhance Flagler County Airport for jet, uh, aircraft accommodation. Work towards establishing a passenger rail station on the Florida East Coast Rail Corridor to enhance regional connectivity, transportation, and economic development opportunities. I think the region, we, uh, about seven, eight years ago, we, uh, looked at reinstating Amtrak on FEC line, but that effort, uh, didn't move forward. Uh, we got about 160 million funded by DOT, but the cost at that time was about over 300 million, so, uh, the effort died. Uh, but part of this is the, um, the expansion to the west, uh, that's also working with the, um, Bright Line, has already identified a location where they would like to have that station already.
And Mayor, you mentioned at the, when we did the, uh, new flume designation, here's your policies on those.
Yeah. And, um, encourage industrial and development near airport and along, uh, Florida East Coast Rail Line. Establish buffering and noise pollution standards to discourage residential development near active rail corridors. So, the objective, next objective is 2.19, transportation impact fees. Ensure the effective implementation and periodic review of the city's transportation impact fee ordinance to accurately reflect the impacts of new development on the transportation network, and to maximize the use of fees for improving the city's transportation system. Policy supporting that includes conduct comprehensive review of transportation impact fee ordinance every five years. We are currently doing that effort, uh, as of right now, and we'll bring it to you, uh, hopefully, uh, in either November or December. Engage stakeholders for input during ordinance review to ensure equity. Allow impact fees exclusively for transportation capacity improvements. Prioritize transportation projects in capital improvements program. We have two more objectives, then we finish with this first goal. Objective 2.110, development of transit opportunities. The city of Palm Coast will actively collaborate with Flagler County to expand and improve transit alternatives that meet the growing needs of Palm Coast citizens. Promote efficient land use patterns, reduce congestion, and decrease vehicle miles travel. By doing, collaborate, uh, with Flagler County on mass transit development plan. Support transit development plan updates, uh, as addressing service needs, costs, and funding. The, uh, transit development plan requires a minor update every year and a major update every three years, so we will engage into that process with, uh, with the county. Provide data assist in route, uh, planning and identify transit hubs within city limits. Implement programs and incentivize development supporting multimodal, uh, transportation. And objective 2.111, reduce commuting demand on Interstate, uh, 95. Support the development of strategic mixed-use centers to reduce commuting demand on I-95, while providing opportunities for employment growth and fostering economic development within the city. A prime example is, uh, developments along Palm Coast Parkway and 100. And that basically, uh, in, in, with the purpose is trying to reduce, uh, impact to I-95, as people get off of I-95 to go shop and/or to work there. To promote, um, mixed-use developments along major arterials to create walkable environments. Concentrate employment and higher-density residential development in strategic mixed-use centers. Co- locate residential, commercial, office, and civic uses to reduce the vehicle miles travel, and improve and widen parallel corridors to I-95 at Oakings Road and new north-south corridor, County Road 2209. And with that, uh, goal number one is, is, is completed, and would like to stop here if you have any questions.
Vice Mayor?
No, I'm, I'm good. I, um, I'm just, like, looking at the I-95 situation. It's such a mess out there. It's, it's like, you feel like you're taking, feel like you're taking your life into your own hands sometimes when you get on I-95, and we do need to come up with a solution for that and get that done quickly. It's one accident, and you're stuck for an hour, um, or longer sometimes, and, you know, I always fear going to Jacksonville to catch an airplane, that I'm gonna miss a flight, no matter how much time I give, so, I'd like to see that happen.
Yes, sir.
Um, with regards to goal 2.1, or objective 2.1.8, where it references enhancing Flagler County Airport for jet aircraft accommodation, I think that we need to consider, um, effects on surrounding residential areas and ensure we have updated contour and nor- noise studies, um, to make sure that as we improve aircraft, expand, whatever it may be for the airport, that we're not excluding consideration of those effects on the surrounding neighborhoods. That should be a policy objective, in my opinion. Um, sorry, I'm flipping through my notes here. Uh, with regards to objective 2.1.4, where it says the city will develop a short-range and long-range transportation plan, you mentioned a couple different, um, studies. Is there a timing or schedule of these proposed studies, or is this just on an as-needed basis? For instance, it says develop strategies, including corridor studies to address and identify deficiencies, and then there's a list of four things.
Yeah, there, uh, there's, basically, uh, we are part of the TPO, and the TPO is required to update every five years the long-range transportation plan. And so we work closely with them in order to, to develop our short-range, uh, plan, and we would include that in our CIP as well on an annual basis, in order to, to, uh, get sufficient funding to do that, as well as, as through TPO and DOT.
And this will be the first time that all of Flagler is included, so we have not been, uh, all of our geography has never been a part of the TPO before, and as soon as the governor signs off on the apportionment, then, uh, we're good to go.
And then the last comment I had, sorry, was under objective 2.1.2. Um, you state that, uh, this is under concurrency. We should exempt specified developments from concurrency requirements. What are we exempting and why?
Yeah, there, there are, it's listed in, in, uh... State section. Yeah, it's right there. For example, it's listed, uh, for developments, what we call it, de minimis impact, is less than 1% impact to the capacity of the road, and, um, it will, um, for example, also, like, transit facilities, uh, we would like to, uh, to, um, exempt that. Uh, solidways, mass transit, multi-use development of regional impact, basically, because they already mitigated for that, so then, then that will be, uh, exempt, um, from concurrency. for that. So then, then that would be, uh, exempt, um, from concurrency.
And it's consistent with state statute, too.
Yeah.
So state statute spells out certain uses that he mentioned. Uh, 380, oh six, a Florida statute requires us to exempt certain
Yeah.
So then I have two comments.
Like DRIs.
Or I guess an either-or. I would suggest that we either reference the statute, or suggest that it's not required to even have it in here, being that it's already required by the statute. So, either direction, but I, I think to make it uns, I guess, non-specific, I'm not a really big fan of leaving it more. And I understand these are just kind of the highlights. It's more specific in the actual plan, but just to be more specific with regards to the, to the statute. Um, when you say mitigate roadway impacts of developments through funding or construction, what does that mean? So, fund through, minimize or mitigate the impacts through funding. What do you mean specifically?
Part of the, uh, uh, legislation, um, basically Statute 163.3180 allows proportionate share. So when a development impacts the system and makes certain segments fail, they have to mitigate for that. So they can mitigate, based on statute, uh, allow developments to move forward by mitigating their prop share of the impact.
Mm-hmm.
And when we, we, they mitigate for that, we would use that, uh, in order to, uh, fund a particular improvements that has that impact. Or they can choose to construct it. So, for example, if they, um, they, uh, they develop along Oakings Row, um, and they basically cause a segment of Oakings Row to be deficient, they can basically construct it, expand it to four-lane or to six-lane, uh, or they can basically provide us the, uh, the appropriate amount of their impact to, uh, to us, for us to do that.
So the onus of this objective would then be on the developer?
That's correct, right.
Okay.
It's on the developer. That, and that's why we still maintain transportation concurrency. Based on statute, we can, that's an option, uh, that we can eliminate. But with the concurrency management system for transportation, we still have that, that tool in order to basically, uh, require developments to mitigate for, for the impacts.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, I have the same comment. If it's, if it's already required by statute, I don't know that it's required to be listed as an objective in the alternative. If there is a statutory reference, I would suggest putting it in there so that we have more, just more transparency in our comp plan.
Yeah, I think it is referenced in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that, that particular statute that I just spoke, yeah.
Okay.
I, I just take exception to, I think on, you, the first sentence on the first page, you have a pretty bold statement there, that your transportation is the cornerstone. I'm thinking with all of the emphasis and prioritization we gave to the environment, I know it's just a language thing, but I'm not sure it's the only cornerstone, and I wouldn't want it to overshadow what we have spoken about so diligently with regard to the environment.
Maybe change D to A, A cornerstone.
Just that simple, okay.
Maybe A, yeah.
That concludes my comments, so thank you.
Our four corners, right?
Thank you, Mayor.
So we can have four of this.
Yeah, this is not, uh, part of the policies. There's just basically a description of it, yeah.
And who's up next?
I, I have three more
Yes, sir.
goals, yeah. But that these three
Oh, okay, sorry.
additional goals are a lot, uh, brief, uh, briefer than the other one. So the next goal is 2.2. Uh, we're talking about increased interconnectivity. So the goal here is to reduce traffic on collector and ulterior roadways by increasing interconnectivity between existing and proposed residential communities, residential and commercial development, and adjacent commercial development. I think we, so far, we have been doing a very good job in, in, in doing, uh, have that interconnectivity between residential and, and, uh, non-residential. Objective 2.2.1, veh, vehicle interconnectivity. So enhance and enforce, uh, standards for commercial and residential connectivity to reduce traffic on collector and ulterior roadways by increasing interconnectivity between existing and proposed uses and developments. And the policy supporting that is to strengthen the LDC regulations, requiring commercial developments to connect to adjacent properties and plan for future connections. Require new residential developments over 100 units, or assessing longer streets to provide multiple external connections to ulterior roads. Promote roadway connections between residential, institutional, and commercial areas to enhance pedestrian and bicycle usage. To implement access management strategies to reduce traffic conflicts on major roads and promote shared access points. So, today, we already implement that. We've been, basically, every, um, commercial track or lot that's coming in to develop, we require them to have interconnected to the adjacent lots. So, for example, along, uh, 100, in the town center development, we require all that. Uh, along, basically, Oakings Row, uh, they have approximately one acre, uh, commercial lot, we require them to, to connect it, uh, to each other. So that, that's the kind of, um, interconnectivity that reduces impact to, to ultras and collectors. That's for vehicular connection, interconnection. The next objective is, um, 2.2.2, Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan. Enhance standards that encourage and/or require establishment of sidewalk connection or multi-use paths between new residential and commercial development. And the policies to support that ensure new developments include sidewalks or multi-use paths linking residential, recreational, and commercial areas. Update pedestrian and bicycle plan to prioritize sidewalk and bicycle facility needs. Funding sources in five-year, um, CIP projects. Prioritize improvements to ulterior and collector roads with bicycle lanes during construction or upgrades, and enforce requirements, uh, for bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in new residential and commercial developments. So, what we have seen, um, through the last over 20 years or so, uh, we did, um, basically, a pilot project, uh, when I was here, um, the, uh, multi-use path along Pine Lakes. And that was our first pilot project, just to see if it attracts, you know, users or not. And then we found out it immediately attracted, um, so many people using the multipurpose path. And based on my experience, that we also seen that new subdivision, now they're coming in, instead of providing two side, uh, five-foot sidewalk on both sides of a row of their collector, they now provide one, um, five-foot sidewalk on one side and a multipurpose path on the other side. And, and I think that is very, uh, useful, because the, the, the residents in that particular subdivision would use it a lot, more than the five-foot sidewalk. So, part of that, we are looking at implementing that, uh, in the, uh, LDC upcoming years, that we're gonna, uh, provide those kind of standards for your review.
So, Fong, just a quick question. So, how, how do they enforce the, the, so you've got pedestrians on one side and multimodal on the other. Is there an enforcement piece to that, or it's just obvious that you would, what's the, what's the construction of the multimodal piece? What is that? Is it dirt? Is it natural? Is it, what is it?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a wider, um, uh, pathway, and, and typically, we, instead of concrete, we would allow basically asphalt, just like we have it.
Okay.
And, and people tend to feel more comfortable walking or riding their bikes on that than, basically, on a five-foot, uh, because you have
On the slabs.
You know, two, two-way traffic there is, is more difficult for, for people to use, right?
Wow, sidewalks, what a concept. Um, I, I mean, seriously. Um, but when we say encourage or require, is that requiring us to make that decision here, or at what point? Because I would like to require them, rather than encourage them, but I don't know if we can.
Yes, you, you can, uh, um, enforce them through the standards. So if a subdivision comes in, then we would basically require to provide a certain
Right.
uh, number of sidewalks. Or also, part of the standard is that if we build new road or expand existing or roadways, then we would have to include those as well.
I think we're talking required, not encouraged, correct?
Well, the only pla, well, it says ensure. The only thing is, so if you get into a
Uh, it actually says encourage.
At the top.
I'm reading ensure here.
At the top.
Okay, but, so, when you get into a, a development per se that might be, uh, acre properties, you may or may not wanna get into the sidewalk thing. I don't know. It depends.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. So do we need some sort of, do we need more specifics, is what I'm asking?
I could tell you, in, in our land development code now, you know, when we have a new planned community, you know, a, a subdivision of residential, we require sidewalks.
Okay.
And we require those connections. And we plan that subdivision to be able to accommodate, because how many times have we heard, you know, IPNT, right, develop Palm Coast in early seventies without that width and the swell. We do all urban design now for, require urban design for new subdivisions, which would accommodate for these sidewalks. And then what we try to do is we have a, a trails and bicycle pedestrian master plan that will update. We also have a policy coming up where we would want to coordinate with the county to have a regional county-wide master plan, like we did for the parks. We worked with it. It's very successful. So the idea is to have these connections, you know, that are called out not only in here, but, but in, or, or other chapters as well, you know, so.
So, just, I, I wanna back up to one thing. I asked a question earlier about a conflict in zoning between our comp plan now and a future one. In general, uh, between our present plan and a future one, uh, do you guys see any conflicts? And if there are any, how would we resolve them? Do you see any effort on anybody's part or ability to go back and say, I wanna refer to the old plan, not the new plan? I mean, what happens when we make this transition?
So I think, I think for our comprehensive plan, from a zoning standpoint, no, no
Just from, from every standpoint.
No conflict.
More generic, do you see any areas?
But yes, I do see, you know, some of the policies, for example, that we are proposing here today, like we heard a lot about trees, right? And when we touched on the conservation and coastal section, we, we, that, we have policies set in place to go back and reevaluate our, um, our landscape code, for example, where, you know, and like, like we talked about in conservation, it's, it's going to be a balance, right? You still have property rights, you still have rights to develop. So where are those opportunities where we can enhance some, some of that landscape to get that smaller town feel? For example, you know, maybe, maybe keeping a larger buffer on some of your major roadways from a residential, you know, from a newly planned, uh, subdivision of residential, maybe you keep those larger natural buffers. It's not a lot of money to keep natural buffers, but maybe you have them keep those larger buffers, and then in an eternal of the development, maybe you create some regulations where you don't need to buffer adjacent to your stormwater pond. So there's some give and take. You know, you're not taking the development rights, they still have the right, but you're making a better product for our community, and a better product for, for that community as well.
So, so we could have some challenges down the road?
When we get to the land development code, we're definitely gonna, you know, have, you gotta have stakeholders involved in creating and being consistent with this comprehensive plan. I don't know about challenges. We've been very successful on our first land development code, with our first initial comprehensive plan, to be able to work with the citizens and the development community to create a code that everyone's happy about. But we will have to need, definitely make changes to our land development code.
So possible legal challenges even? I'm just asking, I'm just...
Yeah, I hope not, but that's always a possibility.
Okay. Um, well, great. Well, Mayor stepped away, so, Ms. Pontieri?
Yeah, I have a, a question if, if, whether or not we should, at this point, now that we have the comp plan reopened, address motorized bikes.
Ooh, good question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had a few complaints about those.
I've had a lot.
Yeah, they go fast.
They do go fast. So, and, and the problem is, I mean, I have one, and I love it, but people ride them on sidewalks, and it's not safe, particularly when they approach people with pets. Um, so is, I, I don't see anything about that here. I don't know, I think it should fit here. Um, I don't know if you all are, you know, have any suggestions as to how we
That's a great comment, and, and Planning Board also mentioned that, and that's something that we'll be looking at for, for a policy.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then I had one question on the previous slide, where it says promote roadway connections between residential, institutional, and commercial areas. Um, can we add green space? That's not, or, or are you considering institutional to also include green space? So in other words, connecting these different areas with also, you know, interconnecting them with our trails and our, if there are, if there is conservation, I don't, I don't know.
Um...
So under 2.2.1, vehicle interconnectivity, are you, are we, are we including in here bi, bicycles because, or is this just cars?
Yeah, is, is the next one here?
Because it says pedestrian and bicycle usage. Promote roadway connections between residential, institutional, and commercial areas to enhance pedestrian and bicycle usage. So should we include in that our conservation and green space areas?
Probably in the next objective, maybe not in the vehicle one, but the, but the following one with the trails.
Under pedestrian and bicycle plan.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I think that, that would be the appropriate location, yeah.
Thank you.
And, and, and since we mentioned bicycles, by the way, I've got one, too. Um, I noticed on some of our paths, at least along Pine Lakes Parkway, there are signs saying no motorized. Is a, is a motorized, electric motor considered motorized on a bicycle?
That's the problem is that, they used to be regulated by CCs, right? Cubic centimeters of engines, 49 cc's or less, and now that we have to measure them with amperage and volt, it becomes a whole different ballgame.
Yeah.
There, there is a section
You memorize this stuff at night, Nick? That's pretty good.
Oh, yeah, I'm all about it, yeah.
There, there's a section in Florida statutes that define e-bikes as bicycles and must be treated as such.
I've had questions about it.
So I, I'm sorry, Jose, I didn't understand the answer to the question. It is considered a motorized vehicle, or it is not?
By definition, in Florida statutes, e-bikes are considered as bicycles.
The problem is, how big can they be?
They are not, they are not motorized vehicles.
They're, they're not. Okay. But, well, but, they are motorized, but by definition
By law, they're not.
I guess by definition, e-bikes are
You repeat that again.
treated as bicycles.
Which is why we are going to do something about them in our comp plan, since, yeah, since they're not motorized. Thank you.
Also, uh, overarching term that is used is called mic, micro-mobility, and that has a certain, basically, um, speed limit attached to that, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can, can, can look into that as well.
Perfect.
Mayor of City Council, um, a lot of communities are struggling with this right now as the e-bikes have become very popular, and Parks and Rec is doing some research into how to deal with it on our trails.
Thank you.
So the next goal is 2.3, Multi-Use Trail System. Develop and maintain a citywide system of greenway trails and combined pedestrian and bicycle opportunities. So Objective 2.3.1 talks about trails. Continue to expand and maintain the system of linear trails connecting the city to internal and adjacent lands and water, and expand the system of trails that together with the city's sidewalk system, provides access for recreation, and serves as the alternative mode of transportation. And the policy supporting that includes expand and, uh, maintain linear trails to connect the city with internal and adjacent lands, promoting recreational use and alternative transportation. Identify future multi-use and nature trail locations based on map 2.10, enhancing accessibility and connectivity. Uh, that's in your data analysis chapter. Utilize a greenway tra, system for trails in natural settings, well, wherever possible, and connect rails to trails, uh, projects with city and county parks, uh, water bodies, and conservation areas to integrate, uh, trail networks. Uh, we have only one, that's the Lehigh Trail. Uh, collaboration with Flagler County and adjacent municipalities to develop and implement a comprehensive community-wide multi-use trail master plan, which, uh, basically Ray had addressed about that, that we're gonna reach out to the, uh, other municipalities in the county.
Don't we, we don't already have a, a trail master plan?
We do internally. The city does.
Okay.
We wanna make sure we're coordinating, you know, if we're going like this on our boundary, we wanna make sure they connect.
Yeah. And then the last objective is relating to, uh, two point, uh, is Goal 2.4, a street maintenance and improvement system. Ensure that all streets and related drainage facilities within the city are adequate and properly maintained. properly maintained to meet transportation needs and provide safe travel for residents and visitors. Objective 2.41 Roadway Maintenance and Related Drainage. Protect the integrity of existing streets and street drainage structures. And the policy is accommodating that. Periodically revise street maintenance program to prioritize road segments needing repair. Update pavement management plan annually to schedule road resurfacing. Improve road shoulders and prevent deterioration. Identify and eliminate valley gutters on ulterior and collector roads to improve drainage. Our Public Works Department has basically the roadway schedule for pavement improvements, but it's not basically publicized or put it on our website for residents to use. So I think that's one of the comments from the PLDRB, said that we should basically provide that for our residents to know. I think that was a good suggestion. And then Objective 2.42 Bridges. Ensure that all bridges within the city are safe and properly maintained. By conduct biannual bridge inspection in collaboration with DOT. Prioritize safety and maintenance of city bridges and approaches. Identify funding sources for necessary bridge repairs through intergovernmental coordination. So all the bridges within the city is inspected by DOT, if it's considered a bridge. And recently, we have reached out to DOT, their structure design department, to ask for help in basically review design, bridge design, because we have a few subdivision that comes in with a bridge, and we don't have the expertise in order to do that. And they are willing to review it for us, and we are very appreciative of that. So that bridges inspection, basically, DOT would do that. We would probably do coverts and stuff like that, but not bridges. Objective 2.43 Roadway Safety. Ensure that all roadways in the city are safe for all users. Review and enforce roadway signage and striping standards consistent with DOT and UTCD guidelines. Conduct annual survey of traffic signs and pavement markings for repair and replacement. Implement speed zone studies on collector and ulterior roads as needed. And coordinate with Flagler County Sheriff's Office to enhance traffic accident report and safety measure. And then the last objective is 2.44 Evacuation of Residents. Develop the capacity, capability to evacuate all residents of the city in the event of a threat of natural or man-made disaster. In order to do that, we collaborate with the Northeast Florida Regional Council to refine evacuation plans and designate primary evacuation routes. So we have that, we have been in close contact with them to do that. Update procedures and training for public works employees regarding road closure and traffic routing during emergencies. We have that plan with the sheriff's office. Maintain readiness to clear obstacles such as falling trees and disabled vehicles on evacuation routes. Require multiple means of ingress eagles for new subdivision to ulterior roads to facilitate emergency access. I just want to point out to you that bullet number three, maintain readiness to clear obstacles, that requires a lot of funding. FEMA will reimburse, but we need to have the dollars ready in order to do that. We have seen through the years, many communities basically suffer because they don't have enough, you know, funding or manpower to do that. So with that, I think that concludes my transportation element.
So just, since you brought it up, our fund balance is kept to some respect for an emergency situation like Fong just mentioned? Because FEMA, FEMA payback could be, you know, we've seen it years, right? So is that to some extent what the, what the fund balance is generated for?
Yes, sir.
Hurricane season now, I think it's an appropriate question.
That's exactly one of the items you would have the emergency fund for, for prepayment of those items, because FEMA is a reimbursement.
Questions for Fong at this point?
I have none, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
So Mayor?
Sorry, I just have one comment. Under 2.4.1 Roadway Maintenance and Related Drainage, I know we talked about certain striping that could be done to narrow lanes as we're doing road maintenance. So we kind of kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. So I'm not sure if maybe something could be added underneath here to look at possible, I don't know, fiscally conservative or responsible ways to incorporate road safety mechanisms during construction. I don't know if there's something like that that can be put in here so that we make it a policy to, hey, if we're going to resurface anyways, and we know that this is kind of a target for speeders or whatever it may be, let's go ahead and restripe, make that lane narrower, or do the curbs, or whatever it is that staff or city council decided to do at the same time.
So it's kind of an efficiency thing?
Correct.
If the opportunity is there, take advantage of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I think one of the safety component that I've seen, especially at night, is the RPMs, reflective pavement markings. I think that's very useful for drivers, if we have that, basically, just in the center line, it would be so helpful. So that could be part of the LDC cooperation, that when we do that, we'll go before you to request that, yeah.
So Mayor, we have one more, if there's any more comments here. We have one short chapter, and that's the capital improvement.
Okay, you got us, you got to have our attention.
Mayor, it's
No time like the present.
Four objectives, so we just got to get through four more objectives.
All right, give me your favorite three.
I'll be very brief through this, because really, the capital improvements element is just a summary of the various elements you've seen before you. The utilities covers water and sewer, the parks covered the parks, and as you just heard, transportation, call those transportation. And really, this capital improvements element is just a statement on recognizing those, that we need to maintain the levels of service for those different facilities. And this is, and the capital improvement schedule that goes along with this element is a reflection of the CIP that you adopt every year. And so, nothing, nothing new here. But we do have a goal here, again, to implement capital planning program that provides and maintains a timely, efficient, and fiscally prudent manner public facilities and services which protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Adequately serve existing and new development. Is this, is consistent with the city's future land use plan, achieves and maintains adopted facility levels of service, maintain the existing infrastructure, and minimize public costs. Under that goal, we have an objective to use the capital improvements element to guide the programming implementation of public facility improvements to correct existing deficiencies, repair and replace worn-out or obsolete facilities, and to accommodate previously approved new growth in an efficient, cost-effective, and timely manner. Policies under that objective include addressing those existing deficiencies, replacing those obsolete facilities, and accommodating growth efficiently, including an annual schedule of capital improvements to maintain service standards, and again, to ensure consistency of this, the capital improvement schedule with the future land use element and the other comprehensive plan elements. Again, that's just really tied back to the concurrency management system and making sure we have adequate infrastructure and facilities to accommodate existing population and projected growth. Objective 8.12 City shall use the capital improvements process, your typical budgeting process, for the update and refinement of multi-year projections of fiscal resources such that a financially feasible schedule of capital improvements is maintained. These policies include harmonizing the CIE and the CIP, again, through your budget process, and incorporating that into the element. Updating the CIP annually by October 1st, that's the, and the inner mingling of terms here, but updating the, really, the CIE annually, and it would be after the October 1st when you, when the new budget kicks into, into gear or becomes effective. And including maintenance of, again, including maintenance of existing infrastructure and debt management strategies. Objective 8.13 Talks about level of service and development approvals, and by adoption of the comprehensive, adoption implementation of the comprehensive plan, land use decisions shall require maintenance and achievement of adopted level of service standards, and shall be coordinated with the CIE and public facility elements, including the adopted schedule of capital improvements. Again, aligning that if we approve new development, we have the facilities and at least plan, at least budgeted in our, through the CIP, to accommodate that, that new development. So again, the policies under this objective, just maintain, achieve adopted level of service of public facilities. Evaluate new development against the adopted level of service standards and capital improvement schedule. Adopt a monitoring system, that's our concurrency management system, to ensure adherence to level of service standards, and to plan accordingly for future utility expansion for annexed lands. And the last objective is that the user pays principle. The developer or owner shall bear a proportionate cost of needed facility improvements, again, just to be consistent with Chapter 163 of Florida statutes. And the policies all tie back to ways that we ensure that the developer is meeting their proportionate cost of public facility improvements, and that is through the implementation of impact fees, capacity fees, and other mechanisms to fund new facilities. And some of these policies you've seen before, regularly evaluating the adequacy of our fees and impact fees to meet the fiscal demands of new development, and complying with state laws on development mitigation of impacts. And Fong talked about that briefly through the proportionate share program, where you basically pay and go. And that's
So just a quick question. It's a hard question, but just a very, very short answer. If the state continues to try to usurp home rule in some ways that are reflected in our comprehensive plan, what does that trigger? Does that trigger review of our plan, an update of our plan? How do you deal with that? Because you, you've seen it, you know it's coming, that it's an on, it's a forward march from this, from the Capitol going forward. So just, I'm just asking, what's, what does that trigger on your side?
I think it's adaptability, right? I mean, the state has every right to preempt us. And then that may necessitate that we go back, look at our land development code, or look at our comprehensive plan, because our goal is, right, is to achieve those, those goals and those, those guiding principles that the citizens want, and we do our very best to do what we can to achieve that.
So it triggers an update, a review by you, and then you come to city council with, okay?
It can.
It's a long conversation, I did. I just wanted to understand what the mechanism was. Final questions or comments? It's been a long day, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect much.
I'm good with what we just heard, so.
No, just want to thank staff once again for everything that you're doing.
Mayor, I just have quick next steps.
Please.
So thank you so much. This was great. Our next step, we are going to utilize the August 13th, we call that a pre-transmittal workshop. That is where you've heard, we got comments from Planning Board and the citizens and city council, so we'll bring those comments back to you, and how we address those comments. And we'll have the glossary as part of that chapter, or as part of that workshop, and some maps. And hopefully, we'll tidy everything up, make it look nice and pretty, and as pretty as we can get. Get that out to the state on our transmittal hearing for August 27th. Then we wait on the state response, and then hopefully, the adoption somewhere on October 15.
City council would receive that during the normal timeframe in advance of, of a meeting, that we review it, or we'd have some extra time on that? Because obviously, it's a lot to look at.
Yeah, before, before the adoption hearing, we'll have to see if they come back with some recommendations, and then we'll have to go from there. They may not have any, and we maybe be good to go on October 15, so we'll have to be a little flexible. Yep. But thank you so much.
Good. So with that, I have, hold on, let's just make sure I haven't missed anything here.
Public comment, except there's no public.
No, I understand there's no public, but I still have to
Nick, if you'd like to go
So public, there are no members of the public, so there is no public comment available at this time, closed public comment. City council members, anything final for today?
Oh, I don't want to suck up a second at a time.
And there is no city attorney, so I'll go right to the city, to Mr. DiLorenzo, any final comment?
Just, thank you, city council. I know that was a very long day. I really appreciate all your efforts into the comprehensive plan today and in the past, as well as to planning staff. And there were also many staff members you didn't see through this process that were helped coordinate this, including comms and utilities and engineering and other groups as well.
Thank you. I think everybody here appreciates that.
I think we should recognize, it's been a long time since Jason has set up here.
That's true.
So I want to thank him for being here.
Absolutely. So with that, I would entertain
I'll make that motion.
A motion to adjourn. The vice mayor's made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Clufus. So all in favor? Aye. Aye, we're adjourned.